I'm Trade and Commerce. We've got the great Bill Rosendahl. I think we're good to go. Are you ready, Mr. Chair of Budget and Finance?
Ready, my Mr. Chair of TCT.
I'd like to ask that the CIO come to the center table and get this meeting going and give us a articulate on what is before us.
And for the record, let me read item number one, which is a report from the CIO relative to a response to the SMG letter protesting the selection of AEG for the management and operation of the Los Angeles Convention Center.
Good afternoon. Miguel Santana, CIO. As was indicated, you have two matters before you. The first one is consideration of a protest letter by SMG regarding our recommendation to select AEG to run, to operate the convention center. And depending on the outcome of that decision, you also have a second matter on the selection of AEG directing us to proceed forward on further negotiations with AEG. To put this in context, this report is, follows over two years of discussion regarding the convention center. And this proposal to privatize the operations of the convention center is one piece of several pieces to enhance that asset. Along with the privatization of the convention center, your council has also directed that the role of the general manager of the convention center be strengthened and that the oversight role of the commission itself also be strengthened. At the end of the day, the convention center is, will be run and operated by the City of Los Angeles and by the authority of that commission. They are, we are proposing that the delegation of the day-to-day operations be given to a private operator and that the contract with the L.A. Tourism Bureau be handed over from my office to that department to bring about better coordination on bookings and ultimately to bring more citywide conventions to the City of Los Angeles. This is a contract that results in the privatization of the actual function of the day-to-day functions. Decision-making authority will ultimately be in the hands of the general manager and the authority and ultimately by your council and the mayor. This RFP had several stages in it. We originally released the first RFP back in December of 2012 where we received, where we received two proposals. One of the proposals was deemed non-responsive on the advice of the city attorney due to failure to submit financial information as was determined by the RFP. Following that decision, AEG submitted an appeal that came to your body. Your body made the decision that based on the premise that competition is a healthier thing for the city, decided to cancel the RFP and begin a new one. A second RFP was reissued on April 25, 2013, at which we received two bids, one from AEG and one from SMG. An independent panel was put together by my office that represented labor, represented the city. There was also representation of the entertainment hospitality industry as well as economic development. And based on their independent analysis and review, they recommended SMG, AEG rather, be granted the proposal. My office supports their recommendation. Following that announcement, SMG filed a protest letter, which is what is before you today. I would like to walk you through the main points of the protest and give us, give you our recommendation as to how to proceed. There are several issues that SMG raises in the letter. The first one is in questioning the initial, the decision to cancel the previous RFP. The decision that your body made was on the advice of the city attorney that the best way to proceed to ensure competition was to cancel the original RFP and to direct us to reissue a new RFP, and which we, which we did. There was no other relationship between those two processes. One was completed and another one was restarted. The second issue specifically challenges that AEG fails to meet the minimum qualifications as established for the RFP. The RFP makes it clear that you need to have five years of experiencing, experience managing and operating a convention or exhibition facilities in similar markets. And AEG meets that threshold based on the independent analysis of our various advisors that we brought to assist us on this project, who are experts in the convention center industry and based on the determination of the independent panel that we established. The second area is proposals, proposers should have a minimum of five years' experience providing food and beverage services inclusive of five service catering operations in convention exhibit, exhibition facility in similar markets. AEG has been providing in-house food and beverage services in all of its convention and exhibition centers for over 20 years. Further, the firm AEG is proposing to subcontract with the firm that has over 35 years of experience in fine dining, restaurant quality food and beverage services to convention center. Lastly, in this area, in the qualifications, there was in the RFP an expectation that similar facilities are, a definition of how we define similar facilities. And we define them as convention or exhibition facilities with a minimum of approximately 35, 350,000 square feet of exhibition space and 100 square feet of ballroom and meeting room space combined. And AEG meets those qualifications based on other spaces that they run around the world. The third issue that was raised in the protest was that AEG has a disqualifying conflict of interest. We have discussed this matter thoroughly with the city attorney and the city attorney has advised us that there is no conflict of interest that, that would result in AEG not being qualified for consideration. Any further discussion on this item, I would defer to the city attorney who's present. Item number four, they questioned the scoring system, the application of the scoring, and alleged that it deprived the city of the best value. There were four primary criteria that was used to, to evaluate and score the two proposals. Each area was given equal weight based on the direction that your committee and the council overall had provided to my office. One was on qualification and experience. And the question here, the threshold question is can this, this bidder run similar conventions and exhibition centers? Have that, do they meet the minimum threshold in experience? And in this case, AEG did. The second is the quality of the management team that's being provided. And again, both bidders were able to submit sort of who their team would be. The third was the overall approach and methodology, the, the quality of their proposal, the unique aspects of it, how do they leverage their organizations to be able to maximize the benefit to the city? And the final is the fee proposal. What we try to do here is to give equal weight to all of these criteria because in the various discussions that we've had as accounts, with the council and certainly our conversation with the mayor, there was a strong sense that each one of these areas were equally as important. It was important to get a great value for the city and to identify savings compared to doing the, running the convention center ourself. But it shouldn't be the most important of all the other qualifications. It was important to have a team that is experienced, that understands this business and has the ability to run major facilities. It was important to have a partner that understands, who could provide an overall proposal to maximize this asset. So they were given equal weight based on the overall direction. And then the final issue that they raised is concern over the panel itself. They, they alleged that the panel was not experienced and certainly lacked the proper expertise, as they stated, to make this decision. The panel, to keep in mind, we had a, we selected an original panel under the first RFP process and then selected a brand-new panel for the second. In both cases, the, the kinds of individuals that we were looking for met the same kinds of categories. Your council made it clear that we wanted to be sensitive to the number of labor issues that were raised by members of the labor community throughout this process. So we selected an individual in both cases that represented the interests of labor but who did not have a specific conflict as it relates to the running of the convention center. The second individual we selected in both cases is someone who actually knows the city, who understands how the city runs, our various processes, our budgeting, who understands the governance of the city. And we selected a general manager from another department who understands the city. In the third category in both instances, we selected someone who has an understanding of the entertainment and hospitality industry, who runs larger, large venues, who are not in direct conflict with the convention center. And in the final category, we selected an individual in both cases who understand the larger region in the city, understand the role of the convention center in terms of the economic and regional impact it would have. And so the criteria was used in both circumstances. It was certainly a challenge at times to identify individuals who didn't have one conflict or another due to the potential bidders who would submit proposals. But we identified people who did not have any direct relationship with the convention center or with either AEG or SMG to ensure objectivity. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I'm going to start with Mr. Rosendahl. Any questions, Phil? I know you're always prepared.
Well, you know, there's a lot of issues. And my first issue, and I want to be sure the answer is, as you might remember back when we were first doing this, AEG was given the responsibility to pick up the tab for what we were doing at that point until we had a contract in hand from AEG for a team. We kept their feet to the fire in that regard. And things were looking optimistic at one point. Then when Lewicki left, and the energy that he brought to the picture was no longer here. Someone we knew and trusted as a treasurer of L.A., we questioned, where is AEG now and where is AEG going with this? And I need to understand where AEG is coming from. You know, Phil Anshulz and I have never met. Phil Anshulz has not been a friend of the gay community historically. Phil Anshulz has been part of L.A. in a positive way. I like what's happened downtown. I like we've gone from nowhere to, to a vibrant community that can only get better as we move forward in that direction. But the first question is, did he pick up the tab for the $45 million in the early days when we had proposals before us? And Miguel, we made it very clear that whatever expenses were incurred, Anshulz would pay for that. And Lewicki made that very clear to us. I just want to know, did he? Do we have an answer to that question today?
The, I, I believe you're referring to our current agreement with AEG regarding the stadium and the potential of reconfiguring the convention center based on our agreement on the stadium. To clarify, that's not before you today. What's before you today is following a, a competitive process for the operations of the convention center. In relation to, but to answer your question, AEG has been responsive to every aspect of our agreement so far. They have until October of next year to identify a team. And the city's been clear that it will not proceed without a team in hand. So, and every aspect of the agreement as, as laid out, including reimbursing the city for any costs incurred, have been met fully by AEG at this time.
But the answer is yes to that?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know, if there was good faith.
Yes.
The second question has to do with the general manager. I see some gobbledygook here that they have a role in it, but we ultimately have that role? Is that going to be that guy right behind you with the smile on?
Are you referring to Mr. Bud Overham?
Yeah.
Mr. Overham was recently appointed, I understand, as interim, as a general manager. And ultimately, the mayor, the mayor-elect Garcetti will make determinations on all general managers.
So he'll be a candidate for that and he'll have to sing for a separate?
We all will.
Have you ever heard him sing?
You don't want to hear me sing. His birthday is June 15th. We know that about that young man in the back there. Yeah, 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 right. Okay.
Mine was on Sunday.
That's it for the moment. Yours was on Sunday.
Yeah.
Happy birthday to you too.
Thank you.
Mr. Gakkori.
Just, just to clarify this, the first agenda item is dealing with the SMG protests. So within the context of that agenda, we really are just deciding yes or no, are the objections well taken? We're not deciding on who's better. It's just whether or not the protests, as they've been stated, are viable. Is that right?
That is correct. There are two separate items. Obviously, your decision on item number one impacts item number two. And that's why the two matters were bifurcated. But, but what's before you on item number one is specific to the protest letter that SMG filed. A similar situation occurred the last time where you had to consider the AEG appeal of determination of nonresponsiveness. What was before you was not the discussion of who to select for the, to, to operate the convention center.
Okay. So just looking at each of the protest issues, I'm, on protest number one, given the fact that there was a renewed RFP, I think honestly that issue is dealt with on its face. With regard to the appropriate qualifications, was the language of the RFP itself sufficient to provide that if key personnel in the bidders had the requisite experience, that would satisfy the prerequisite for bidding?
It was both that as well as their ability, experience, operating venues of similar size and in, in similar markets. And so...
Right. But it, as a corporation?
Right.
Or with regard to the key personnel who would be assigned?
That is correct.
Presumably to, to this project. Okay. And that was sufficiently stated in the RFP itself?
That is correct.
All right. Conflict of interest issue, I, I have some questions about that I think should be reserved for closed session conference with the attorney, with city attorney's office. Now, with regard to the scoring system, it does seem that as this shook out, the, since each of these categories was of roughly equal weight, the ones that, the categories that this issue turned upon were qualifications in which SMG had a higher score, fairly substantially higher score, and fee in which AEG had a substantially higher score. And so I guess I'd like you to speak a little bit more to that issue and whether or not, maybe it's not even appropriate for this, but it's more appropriate for the second agenda item. But is it a question of you get what you pay for? Because we did have a higher ranking for one. We had a much better bargain with the other. So how do you, how do you, how did the panel evaluate that juxtaposition of those two standards?
So again, the, the threshold question on item number one is can the bidder manage and operate a venue of similar size? And as you indicated, SMG scored higher based on their experience specifically in the United States in relation to that. On the second, on the point on the, the financial value, AEG was more competitive in terms of both the fee, but also in providing a number of additional elements to the proposal from a financial standpoint that, that made their proposal specifically on the financials much more competitive. And the panel felt that the, the financial aspects of their proposal, because it included an ability to bring about greater conventions, providing us free rent, free space at the neighboring facility, providing us an ability to have free advertising at all AEG venues to advertise Los Angeles and conventions. There was additional, added benefit from a financial standpoint to their proposal while also submitting a proposal that was also the most cost-effective in its face in terms of the fee and the incentive fee. So that's why the scoring went to AEG for the, all of the elements. So in relation to the financials.
So some of those factors added value to the package even if they wouldn't necessarily be scored in the qualifications component of the scoring system?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, the challenge to the scoring system itself, did you consider whether or not that was a substantive or a procedural challenge? And if it was a procedural challenge, what is the appropriate mechanism to challenge, to, to make a procedural challenge to an RFP?
So your, your committee, joint committee is the appellate body. And so it's my understanding, I'll defer to the city attorney for further clarification, has a decision to make as to whether to accept their, their protest and, and to direct us to move forward and reevaluate their proposals or to reject their protest. I don't know if Noreen, you want to join me to provide further direction in terms of ultimately what authority the committee has in relation to this protest?
Noreen Vincent, correct?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you, Councilwoman Birla-Banish. Good afternoon. If the, the question had to do with the scoring with respect to experience versus the cost or the fees, and I believe in the RFP that was released, which was actually taken through city council, the scoring was divided. If I'm not mistaken, it was 25 for fees and 25 for experience. So if the panel was following the RFP criteria, the weighting would be as it was set forth in the RFP. So the city determined at that point that the, the fee was equivalent to the experience and so you weighted each equally. So that's what the city would be required to do is go through and evaluate in accordance with the criteria in the RFP.
Right. So I guess my question specific, more specifically is, if, if the challenge is to that allocation of 25% to each, isn't that a procedural challenge? And if it is, what are the requirements for making a procedural challenge to an RFP?
Well, usually if they have a concern about something that is, if within the RFP, they raise that issue prior to the actual submission of the proposal and, and prior to the award being made. So if somebody wanted to challenge the way in which the scoring was allocated, the challenge should have been made at that point when they realized what the scoring was.
Because otherwise, you get to look at it retrospectively and deciding whether or not it worked to your advantage after the evaluation.
We can't change the scoring at this point because we would then be violating the terms of our own RFP. So the very first thing you have to do is follow your own procurement, follow your own RFP requirements.
And there was no challenge raised when the RFP was released as to the, the four different categories and how each one was given the equal value of weight?
Was there a change in that scoring and evaluation criteria between the first and the second RFP?
No.
So in the first one, which the appellant prevailed in, was used also in the second RFP?
That's correct.
Okay. And there was no protest at either time to the procedure until this appeal?
No. And how the city determines the relative importance of experience versus personnel versus fees is usually a decision that's in the discretion of the, the city or the entity that's releasing the procurement. They're the ones who make the determination as to what the relative weighting should be and the relative importance of it.
Okay. Okay. I think that's all I have, Mr. Chair, for the moment.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I just want to go back. City attorney, you heard my comments before. Did you hear it on the record or not?
Yes, with, I mean, the overall comments with respect to AEG? Yes, I did.
Okay. Reflect on it for me a little bit from a legal standpoint. Everything we're doing is kosher? Or, or does the protest group have any merit? Or I'd like to hear you say something.
In, in going over the protest, I, I think that we would concur with Mr. Santana's analysis of it. With respect to them being the sole responsive bidder, the city clearly pursuant to our charter reserves the right to reject all and to go back out. And in the past, one of the bases for the city doing that would be insufficient competition. And clearly, in this RFP, we had language in there that reflected our charter, that we reserve the right to reject all and to go back out and not to make an award. So the city followed its own charter, followed its RFP when it determined that one of your proposers was indeed non-responsive. The decision was made at that point that you wanted to cancel that RFP and go back out. And that's consistent with the city's right to do that. With respect to the qualifications and experience of AEG, the CIO's office has already indicated that they vetted them for the qualifications and experience and, and looked at the RFP requirements in light of that and determined that they were indeed responsive, that they did, did indeed meet the requirements, the experience requirements in the RFP. With respect to the scoring, I think we've talked about that. How the city selects its evaluation panel is usually within the discretion of the city to make sure that we have the sufficient expertise and qualifications to do that. And again, the CIO's office has done that. They formed a second panel to basically, you know, we had the first panel and then when that proposal was rejected, we went back out. We had a second panel of people who had the same types of qualifications in terms of their ability to look at the proposals, to make an informed decision and a recommendation to the council. So we would support the CIO's analysis. With respect to the conflict issue, the allegation was that AEG has a disqualifying and inherent conflict of interest. The, the SMG submitted along with that the city's conflict of interest forms, what we refer to as the Form 700s. Our conflict attorney has reviewed that issue and we do not believe that there is an inherent or disqualifying conflict of interest. or disqualifying conflict of interest. That doesn't mean that there might not be issues that, depending upon the nature of the contract, the relationship between the city, the scope of services, that it may not be subject to conflict of interest rules. But at this point, we do not believe that there is an inherent or disqualifying conflict that would prevent you from pursuing an award.
Good. You did a great job on that, but just help me, I'm a little dumb, really. When Steve Lopez--
Don't say that.
Well, when Lopez wrote his column months back, over a year ago, he bought into the concept that AEG needs to provide a team before they get any money from anything, and that they have to eat the 45 million or 50 million, whatever it might cost for them to do the preparation. I just want to see if he was a man of his word and did that, or the commitment, as, as CIO was saying, is part of the process going forward, and that no matter what the story is, we will get that. I just want to be comfortable that we're in the right direction on that.
Again, the, the, in terms of our current agreement with AEG pertaining to the stadium, AEG has been responsive and has met every expectation as outlined in that contract, as, as has the city. And so they have until October of 2010 to obtain--
That's 2014.
14, rather. Thank you for correcting that.
Crack some windows, Sergeant, it needs some fresh air in here. It helps.
No, 2014 to, to bring a team. But they continue to be responsive and meet the, the expectations laid out in that contract.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. My colleagues here, I've reviewed this situation here, and I've seen this sometimes happen before in my years of experience. And the city pauses. We do reserve the right to go out again and look at it, and then we look at it with fresh eyes in the sense of what we have a vision for. And that's where we are right now. So on these items here, I'm going to call some public comment cards. Do you have anything you want to do at this time? And I want to make sure, Madam Clerk, have any more cards?
Yes, please. I just want to see this.
Okay. And, yeah. Ms. Vincent, on this here, Madam City Attorney, on this, on the public comment, can, did the cards have to be separate from item one and two?
Uh, yes.
Okay, good.
I would take the comments on item number one.
Got it. Not all are marked. So Michael Crone, is that correct? Michael Crone, and let me just, Kraus, sorry. Tom Labangi, okay.
I know you well, sir.
All right, all right.
Good to see you.
And I want to have a little help here. Michael, since--
That's it.
You got it, you got it right there. Good job. Peter Zan, and I got one more seat up there. Regina Schuyler. So, okay, I failed real bad there, but there's three seats, all right, right there. We got it.
Line up.
You can take the seats as we move. Here we go. Feel comfortable. State your name for the record, and then we go forward.
Thank you, council members. Thank you, committee members. We appreciate your time today. And for those of you who don't know me, I'm Michael Kraus, and I was the former Senior Vice President of LA Inc. here in the city and L A T C B. I'm reading a statement today from SMG, as you may have gotten a letter from SMG stating that, that our, the gentleman who was going to speak's father is ill and was unable to make it. So I'll be reading a simple statement from him. The city's RFP for management of the LACC stated that it sought the most qualified firm with very specific definitions, clarifications, policies, and a process to be followed. Given what has transpired to date, we are here to simply raise the questions about the process transparency and apparent lack of a level playing field. SMG competes nationally for public venues such as yours, and we represent your, the right to make a decision that is in the best interest of the city. However, we believe that the city has failed in its responsibility to the citizens and local businesses to conduct a process that provides the best opportunity for the city to achieve its own goals. Further, we have real questions about the process that has shown clear favoritism, starting with the decision to allow non-compliant bidder to resubmit, and a clear connection between an evaluation committee member and AEG. We ask this committee to consider the following as it deliberates our protest and recommendation of the CIO. Focus on the fee. The scoring process shows the committee gave overwhelming weight to the financial proposals while giving no significant weight to the disparate experience levels of the two firms in the convention industry. Essentially, the city is allowing AEG to utilize the hotel tax rebate they currently receive to fund their financial offer to you as a means of proactive, protecting, rather, the revenues, the revenue streams it enjoys at the JW Marriott. Use a little bit of your time. Convention Center Experience--
Now, what you do is you kind of summarize, hold the clock, I'm going to give you a little extra time, but try to finish with a, with a, with a clear statement of what you want us to hear from you.
Okay, good deal. Convention Center Experience, the RFP set criteria for qualified companies as a minimum of five years. The team we sent in has 20, has 20 senior executives in major markets, and of course, they are all more than experienced in the convention center industry. Clear conflict of interest. And regarding the conflict of interest, we ask, how can the city not hold a contractor accountable to the same conflict of interest policy now in place for the current LACC employees? At the end of the day, this committee and council have three key constituents to consider. Your customers, the meeting planners who may or may not book your facility based on their comfort level or relationship with the management team within the building. And then also the hospitality industry, whose investment will depend on the management of the center for the benefit of the entire industry. And no, and not just any small segment, I might add. Your constituents and the thousands of jobs that will rise and fall based on the success of the convention center. And then in closing, we simply ask that this committee take the process into its own hands, review both proposals, and perhaps interview both firms yourselves. Please take the time to ensure that the process that the city has followed has provided the competitors a level playing field here in Los Angeles.
Thank you, Michael. Michael, I want you to state your full name, start the record.
It's Michael Charchinsky.
Yes, go ahead, please.
I'm the managing director of the Weston Bonaventure, the largest convention hotel in the city of Los Angeles. The Weston Bonaventure Hotel and Suites respectfully request that you stop this process of recommending AEG to manage the L.A. Convention Center. You are recommending our direct competitor to control the convention space in L.A. Per the City L.A. Code of Ethics, this contractor would clearly violate most of the provisions of this policy. We believe a contractor must have equal or higher expectations of their employees. Please see the Code of Conduct. We would also like a written legal opinion on this from the city attorney. The fact that AEG owns and operates a business within one mile of the convention center would operate parking that can be managed for the gain of AEG and sports and recreation facilities, it's only the tip of the iceberg that needs much oversight in this process. The fact that AEG was removed from the RFP process for withholding information on an incomplete RFP, then within two weeks allowed to re-enter the process after the due date is clearly a sign of some sort of favoritism. AEG, the owner of the JW Marriott, L.A. Live, receives a TOT exemption, and we ask that an audit is done on this. Please conduct this audit. They're supposed to take 750 rooms per night out of citywide conventions, and they don't meet this, and we're still giving them a TOT exception. Just make the playing field fair, and we'll be all for this. The selection committee did not have a single representative of the hotel community on it, and this is all about conventions and hotel rooms. And we would love to have input on this. Please do not create a monopoly. We would appreciate you looking at this very closely and changing your decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael. Peter?
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I'm Peter Zan. I represent the owner of the building of that, which Weston Bonaventure sits in. I agree with everything that SMG has said about conflict of interest and also letting AEG back into the bidding after they didn't submit what they need to submit in the bidding. And I believe that the first round of RFP is enough competition, because there was two bidder in the first round, there were two bidder in the second round. However, in the first round, the first bid, one of the bidder did not, did not, I repeat, submit proper bidding documentation. Not that they don't have it, they just didn't submit it. Okay? And then, the panel, I, I, with all due respect to CIO, Mr. Santana, there's not enough hotel knowledge nor user represented there on that panel. Yes, you try to be as fair, as non-conflict of interest as you can, but obviously, obviously, you need to have some hotel experience. We're the largest user of the convention center, and we, together, the hotel in downtown produced one of the largest chunk of TOT for the city of Los Angeles. I would say downtown would probably produce half of the TOT for, for the city. And also, my biggest concern is, I have spoken with many other hotels in downtown. We have approximately 5,000 to 6,000 rooms inventory in downtown. Among that, 5,000 room, among that inventory of 5,000 room, I think 4,000 rooms are represented, represented here in this room today that are against this proposal of off-giving AEG just too much power over the city, too much power over convention, and too much power in downtown, period. We need to have balance and a level playing field for all the other players. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I wanted to call your name again there correctly, please?
Absolutely. My name is Regina Stryker.
Thanks, Regina.
And I'm the general manager for the L.A. Hotel Downtown, which is soon to be the Hyatt Regency in downtown. And we respectfully request that you stop the process of recommending AEG to manage the L.A. Convention Center. Our opposition is simple. We feel that the recommendation of AEG creates a monopoly and therefore an unfair advantage, which is not helpful to the hospitality industry as a whole in downtown.
Very good. Thank you very much. I'll call the next level of cards right here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. And what's your occupancy today, Peter?
Never enough. It's never enough.
I know. I want to know what it is.
High rates.
Oh, no. Okay, good.
Better than that, you.
Got it. Bob Newman. Charlie Mims is for two. Excuse me, these are all two, two, two. Stay where you are, Bob. I'm down to Scott Webb. And are you here for two, two? And Mr. Wooden? Two or one? You're here for item two. General comments? Excuse me? One. Well, then, your name has now been called. Here you go. Thank you. Ernest Wooden, L.A. Tourism. Thank you, and welcome.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I'm Ernest Wooden, the president and CEO of Los Angeles Tourism and Convention Board. The Los Angeles Tourism and Convention Board, as we're known, has been the non-for-profit organization charged by the city with the international and domestic promotion of the city of Los Angeles, its hotels, its attractions, its airport, and its convention center. In the case of the convention center, during the last 12 months, the Los Angeles Tourism and Convention Board has surfaced and contracted more than 40 conventions for all future periods through 2028 at the center. These 40 conventions will have an economic impact on the city of more than $530 million. Through the efforts of the convention sales division, there are now 165 future conventions booked and contracted into the L.A. Convention Center, 78 of which have completed their licensing, and 87 in various stages of licensing, the licensing process with the city attorney's office. The economic impact of these contracted conventions exceed $2.8 billion in 2013 dollars. Clearly, the city is very much in the business of conventions. With that said, the purpose of my speaking today is to encourage the joint committee to make a final, proper determination regarding the professional management of the convention center. The Tourism and Convention Board encourages you to recognize that we are not only in the need of a modernized, competitive physical facility, but that in the end, we are selling and merchandising a service, a service which is fundamentally dependent on experienced and professional facilities management. In conclusion, uncertainty around this matter gives those of us on the team charged with merchandising our facility in an unforgiving competitive environment an unnecessary hurdle to have to overcome. We trust you will share our concerns and move this matter to final completion. We thank you for the opportunity to express our point of view.
Thank you very much. Could I ask the CIO to return to the table? Thank you.
Thank you.
So on this particular issue here, this is item number one. Listen to what everyone said. We've heard what they've said. We've read the documents and whatever, and then the recommendation needed to accept or reject the protest.
That's correct.
Right. So members have any questions on our issue that is before us here on item number one? If we vote yes, vote no. Voting yes would be to accept the protest. Voting no would be to reject the protest and send it on for note and file in council. Mr. Kocorian?
Yeah, and I, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just want to note again that our role in doing this is really evaluating whether the process was appropriately administered. It isn't a commentary on who we like better or anything else. I, I think it's clear that SMG is, is a highly qualified firm that could serve this role very well. That's not the question that's before us. The question that's before us is whether we should reverse the judgment and the process by which that judgment was reached of our staff.
Correct. Any questions?
Again, I got to ask you, McGowan, because when you went through the new strategy, I was near death, and I wasn't aware of anything, including the weather of the day and my position on this earth. So I don't have that history. The only history I have was the day Steve Lopez made it very clear that without a contract in hand, our city, meaning our taxpayers, would not be burdened on this at that time. Obviously, we all have to participate, and the multiplier effect and everything else will be what it is. What happened since then that has brought this to the table here today that I missed during that period? That's what I'm concerned about.
So there's two separate issues. The issue that you've raised has to do with our agreement with AEG on the stadium and the expansion of the convention center.
Correct.
There is not a single penny of public dollars going to, for the stadium. And there's also, the idea is that revenues generated from this agreement will help cover the debt service for the expansion of the convention center. That, that issue is not before you today.
Right.
Okay? And that agreement continues to exist. AEG has been responsive and has met every single element of their contractual obligation based on that agreement. And they have until October of next year, until it expires, to bring a team to the city.
When October of next year happens, Lopez's part of where I was at becomes reality.
Well, well, the truth is, I remember Mr. Lopez's piece, and it was in response to issue raised by Mr. Anshuts in, in discussing this issue to the press, saying that he's already spent over $40 million or some number like that in, in working with the city to establish that this arrangement and this MOU. That's exactly correct. He, the AEG has incurred costs. The city is not owed. And so as we incur costs, we actually get reimbursed from AEG. So there's no, money's owed to the city as it relates to that particular issue. What's before you is, has no relationship with, with the stadium or with the expansion of the convention center. What's before you is a separate discussion that took place, much of it when you were gone, if I recall, about the privatization of the convention center itself. And so currently, it's managed by city employees, and it was our recommendation that it be privatized, based on the best models that exist around the country. The most effective convention centers around the country are run through private management. And so we, you, your council directed us to solicit proposals, of which we received two, AEG and SMG. AEG, after an extensive process, is being recommended both by independent panel as well as my own office. And so, so AEG would then be responsible for the day-to-day operations of the convention center should these contracts proceed. It is important to clarify that the city is not delegating its decision-making authority to the private vendor, whether it is to AEG or SMG or-- to the private vendor, whether it is to AEG or SMG or anyone else. Ultimately, the general manager of the convention center, the commission, once their authority is strengthened, will have the final determination on which conventions get brought in, how the booking policy is implemented, and who gets priority. And those are based on a goal that your council has established to double the number of citywide conventions by the year 2020, which will benefit all hotels in, not just in downtown, but in the region. Did that help clarify that, sir?
He's clarified. For clarification on another point, Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's actually a very related point. I want to talk a little bit about this, this conflict issue, not so much as a legal matter. What would be, is there anything in the RFP and the responses to the RFP that govern whether or not the bidder, what role the bidder has or would have in selecting hotels that would be associated with the convention? How is that dealt with as of now, before there's any negotiation?
I understand. So the RFP allowed for various approaches to that issue. And it's, the idea that was adopted by your council was to strengthen the role of the authority itself of the oversight commission, and the city attorneys in the process of preparing that final ordinance, and to strengthen the role of the general manager to ensure that it is that body that ultimately decides in working with the L.A. Tourism Bureau and the private operator on how, what kinds of conventions come in and how the booking is established. The reason we recommended that is if you, based on our consultant's best advice, the most successful convention centers around the country have a professional group of people within the convention center authority that are constantly in real time reconciling this tension between citywide conventions and local trade shows. And so we, as a city, haven't fully reconciled that conflict, and it's been one of the reasons why ultimately we're not as successful. The convention center as it exists today had the authority to book based on a certain period of time, which some would argue created less opportunity for citywide conventions, because their goal was to remain in that black. So that decision-making authority as to who gets, who is responsible for a specific space in, or has access to a specific space, will remain in the hands of the convention center itself. And it's a role of the private operator to ultimately implement that direction.
And because part of the, part of the mission of this effort is to increase the number of citywide conventions that we have in the convention center in order to maximize the amount of TOT that's realized, the amount of sales tax revenues that are realized from outside sources, all of the other sources of revenues that come from outside of Los Angeles. That was kind of the driving force behind all of this, and for that matter, even the stadium discussion as far as I was concerned. So if we have citywide conventions that are coming in, presumably those are not going to be limited to a single hotel in the area of the convention center. Right?
No, that is correct. That's, the objective here was to expand, to actually double the number of citywide conventions by the year 2020, and to bring greater coordination with the L.A. Tourism Bureau.
You say citywide, you mean national conventions?
So bring national conventions that have a citywide impact. So the conventioners stay at hotels in Hollywood, stay in the airport, stay in downtown, that fill up hotel rooms and, as the industry calls, heads and beds on a, on a citywide regional level to maximize this asset. You know, currently, the far majority, about 15% of the individuals who walk into the convention center are only, are the ones that are coming for a citywide convention. The far majority of the individuals who walk into the convention center itself are coming from Long Beach, from Pasadena, from Pomona for a trade show or for some religious ceremony or swearing-in ceremony. And at the end of the day, that's not why the city's in the convention center business. Our goal is to generate more people visiting Los Angeles, staying at hotels throughout the area, spending their dollars.
And I guess my point with this is that I'm very sensitive to the comments that some of the hoteliers made here about inequities that get created in the pricing structure within the hotel industry by TOT waivers. I'm very sensitive to that, and I understand that very well. That issue is not before us in this decision. That ship has sailed with regard to this particular hotel situation. When we bring conventions in, it's going to fill up those, the hotels in a much broader area than just the hotels adjacent to the convention center. So I don't see that that creates, I'm not, I'm not seeing how that create, how this decision creates an inherent conflict in the management of the convention center. There may be conflicts or inequities that are created by TOT waivers, but that's not the discussion that's before us today. It's not part of this agenda item. So that's, that's my view, Mr. Fred.
Just a technical question. Mr. City Attorney, instead of saying it's the ship has sailed, the ship has checked out on that. Would that be a more appropriate way in the sense of that issue there? I'm trying to get some levity in this room because everybody's so thick. It's okay. All right. So on item one, what we have before us here, on this head up here, I have a bulletin for that right there. This is a motion that I move, and we recommended the council adoption of the CEO's recommendation to find that the protest has no merit and thus deny the protest. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Call for the question?
Question.
Question called. Mr. Rosendahl?
Yes, I vote for this, assuming that October of 2014 is when it will be cleared.
Right. Mr. Kocorian? Yes, Labange, yes. So three yeses. Thank you very much.
And for clarification, the city attorney has opined that we need to take a vote for each committee for us, so I need to poll the members of each committee.
All right. So I'll let you do it.
We are all three members of each committee. Oh, no, we're not. I'm sorry.
You're a two.
No, I forgot. That was aspirational on me.
So that was budget finance. Now for TCT.
Okay. For so, for the TCT committee, Councilman Labange, how do you vote? And Councilman Rosendahl?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Next item.
And the second item today is a CAO report relative to the results of the RFP process and selection of a contractor for the management and operation of the L.A. Convention Center.
Mr. Santana, if you would like to proceed.
Yes. Number two is specific to now the question on whether to proceed forward with further negotiations with AEG for the final, to produce a final contract that will result in their operation of the convention center. And we have several recommendations. First is to approve the evaluation committee's proposed selection of AEG as a successful bidder resulting from this process. Second is to authorize the CAO and the convention center to execute an MOU between the city and AEG in conformist with the general terms set forth in this report. Third, to instruct my office with the city attorney, the CLA, the convention center, and other departments to prepare and present to the council within 30 days a management agreement between the city and AEG that's consistent with the terms of the MOU, which includes language and requires financial investment to be used towards attracting citywide conventions, and that requires any additional available revenue generated by the convention center operations to be reinvested towards the improvement of the convention center, and that caps the fee amount to the amount proposed by AEG in the RFP response. And finally, four, to instruct the personnel department to develop a process whereby full-time convention center employees will be offered placement in other city departments through regular transfer and provisions in the charter, and to begin that process. As we stated in the earlier item, the independent panel selected AEG based on the four elements of criteria. And I'll walk you through sort of the highlights of their proposal, and certainly will be happy to answer additional questions. In relations to qualification, expertise, AEG has world, is a worldwide corporation with a network of venues and a solid reputation in their industry, deep experience in public facilities management, high degree of management experience in public assembly facilities, and has put together a team with experience in convention centers in the United States. AEG is based in Los Angeles and is, employs over 4,500 individuals in the city. AEG corporate offices are also located across the street. In relation to the management team, they presented key business individuals, including Mr. Robert Newman, who has over 25 years of facility management, including convention centers, and who will oversee the contract as president of AEG facilities. There's a deep experience, again, in public facilities management. In relation to approach and methodology, they have a strong background in facility management. Brings them a general understanding of administrating the operational needs of the convention center. AEG has extensive experience in marketing, event planning, and community outreach. They provide a proposal that is reflective of Los Angeles, bringing in with them a number of Los Angeles-based restaurants, including King Taco and Big Man Cakes located here in downtown. In terms of the fee proposal, they provided a very competitive fee, the most competitive, one that our consultants, who have worked on a number of similar deals throughout the country, say is the most competitive they've seen in their industry, which includes a fixed fee of $250,000 and an incentive fee of an additional $250,000. They provided other elements that allow for free advertising in AEG facilities, also provides for business development fund to attract more citywide conventions, an L.A. Live rent credit, a marketing and advertising credit, and a talent booking fee credit, which made their fee structure and the overall financials very attractive and the most competitive. In relation to approach and methodology, AEG has an extensive knowledge of Los Angeles and has worked closely with the L.A. Tourism Bureau and has a strong working relation currently with the convention center itself. So with those various elements of their proposal, the panel recommended proceeding forward with AEG, and my office concurs.
Great. I got to call on public comment right now, but then if you have questions, we could ask the CEO to come back up. Charlie Memes, Peter Zen, Cheryl Perizzi.
Chair. My name is Charlie Memes. I'm executive director of the Los Angeles Professional Managers Association. And if this goes through and the city agrees on a contract with AEG, we have concerns about the four managers that are at the convention center, the two assistant general managers, the concessions manager, and the maintenance manager. A lot of the, a number of the other employees may be in positions that can easily transfer to other departments in the city. Some of these positions at the convention center at the management level are pretty specific to the convention center. And so our concern would be first to see that no harm is done to these people, and that either they have an opportunity to continue to work in the new structure as city employees or have an opportunity to transfer to another department without doing financial or professional harm to them. That's the first item. Second item is, back about roughly 40 years ago when they built the original convention center, and then later on, about 20 years ago when they did the expansion, I wasn't directly involved with that, but colleagues of mine were. And they heard from the manager, the managers of the convention center at those times, the single key item which would allow them to book national conventions was hotel space. You can't get 9,000 TOT if you don't have 9,000 hotel spaces within reasonable walking distance or even shuttle distance to the convention center. So it doesn't really matter who manages the convention center. You're not going to get national conventions coming unless you have space to house the people that would be going to these conventions. You know, people go to San Francisco year after year because they have the hotel space. So this isn't about marketing. This is about having the fiscal facilities in place to get the job done. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Peter, you were called. I got Cheryl Perizzi, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Cheryl Perizzi from the Coalition of L.A. City Unions and executive director of AFSMI Council 36. I wanted to really speak to the issues surrounding the workers at the convention center. As you may well imagine, because conventions are events and staffing is event-driven, that a large number of employees who've worked for years at the convention center are part-time workers, event attendants, parking attendants who, you know, are called in to staff events, building up, taking down events. We have been troubled because, contrary to the explicit language in our labor agreements that guarantee that no worker will be displaced in the event of a contract such as this, the CAO has taken the position, and he even recommended to you today as part of his report, that that, that contract commitment would only be honored as it relates to the full-time workforce. That's not acceptable. It's a violation of our agreement. It's a violation of the spirit in which the council undertook this effort, and that I would ask that your committee, and ultimately the full council, reiterate and support the clear language of a collective bargaining agreement which would protect all workers of the convention center in a light of this contracting. And so specifically that both the part-time workforce and the full-time workforce would be accommodated. You know, there's plenty of conversation that can go on among the parties over the next several months, but this issue of respecting these long-time, this long-time workforce of the part-time employees, that this workforce be honored and respected, and that we find a way to place them within the city family.
Thank you. Peter Zen?
Yes, I would recommend that the council not approve this contract because we have two-thirds of the hotels in downtown, major hotels, 4,000 room out of five, is saying no. I'm sure you have letters, and I'm here myself. You know, before you say yes, I think you ought to go back out and take a look at the contract, especially with conflict of interest issue, which is a big issue for all of us. You know, all due respect to Mr. Santana, there are a lot of conflict, i.e. parking lot, you know, the parking space. How do you charge for it? Who gets the parking space at what time? And other issues similar to that. And who's to, you know, to make sure that all the event that are being supposed to be held at the L.A. Convention Center are not being held now will be held in JW Marriott, in their convention space. So we're on the convention business, okay? JW Marriott is, the city is, we are, and there is no assurance that, that proper oversight is being administered in this contract. And again, I want to reiterate, I have not heard from the city attorney office as to a proper written opinion on the conflict of interest in this particular, with this particular contract. And I urge the council not to vote on it until we do have a written opinion from the city attorney office. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Want to call on now Scott Webb, Bob Newman, and Ted, I want to say it, Fickel?
Fickrey.
Fickel. Excuse me. Say it again, Ted?
Fickrey.
Fickrey. Sorry, man. Call me Tom Labangi. I'm sorry. Okay, here we go, Scott.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members. My name is Scott Webb, and I'm the assistant general manager of the L.A. Auto Show. The Auto Show, of course... The auto show, of course, has been a fixture in Los Angeles for more than 100 years, and is the single largest tenant of the convention center since the center opened in 1971. While we have enjoyed excellent relations with the city's management team, we support the transition to private management for all the reasons in the CAO's report of last year. The auto show's desire and expectation is to work with a convention center management company that will enhance the guest experience for automotive manufacturers, area new car dealers, international automotive press, and guests for the show. Based on our own experience, the hospitality leader that is the perfect fit for the convention center is AEG. Since Staples Center was in the planning stages, we have found AEG to be consistently interested, engaged, sensitive, and responsive to the needs of the show. Without reservation, we respectfully urge you to adopt the CAO's recommendation to award the convention center management contract to AEG. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bob Newman?
Thank you. Bob Newman, President of AEG Facilities. This will be brief, but I just wanted to, to be here with you today and just reemphasize our enthusiasm and our commitment to support the city in the operation of the convention center, and that commitment and enthusiasm extends to all hospitality stakeholders throughout the city and the region. This is a unique moment in time for the city. We all recognize that. The process that the CAO has put, you know, forth, I think is, is put forth to take advantage of that moment in time. We can finally position Los Angeles with the LATCB and the stakeholders as a, as a must-play instead of a might-play in the convention industry. And it's not just nationally, it's regionally, and it's internationally. You know, we're, we're looking forward to activate all of our resources, not just locally, but our 26,000 employees worldwide that are in this business, nothing but this business, the hospitality business, the venue business. And just wanted to reiterate that here personally with you today, and we're looking forward to activating and supporting the city.
Thank you very much, Bob. Ted?
Ted Fickrey, Vice Chairman of AEG. Thank you, committee members. We're, we're honored to have been recommended by the evaluation panel and the CAO to operate the convention center. This is a high priority for us, and we put a lot of hard work into putting forth a compelling financial proposal and an ambitious, ambitious vision for the convention center. We're excited about the opportunity, and we're committed to deliver on the vision that we've articulated for a more vibrant and active convention center. Contrary to some of the suggestions you've heard, we, we believe there's no conflict of interest. In fact, we firmly believe that we're uniquely motivated and well situated to achieve the objective of attracting more events to the convention center, which is consistent with the city's vision for the convention center. We do own a hotel. We own the LA Live property adjacent to the convention center, but we view those as assets, not impediments to the objective of, of making the convention center more active. To be candid, we don't need to operate the convention center to fill our hotel when there are, are events here. We're doing that with the existing events that come to the convention center. Like the city, what we'd like to do is attract events that are not currently coming to the city of Los Angeles. It's clear to us that that's the area where there's the most room for improvement, and that will benefit not only LA Live and our hotel, it'll benefit downtown, and more importantly, it'll benefit the city as a whole. So with that, if we're given the opportunity, we look forward to working with the city to begin negotiating a contract and commence the transition of the management of the convention center.
Thank you so much. Can I ask the CAO, that was the last card. Madam Clerk, could the CAO return? Couple of questions are made on the comment. Mr. Memes made the position of AGMs and otherwise managers, they're like positions, and how much a commitment is there to have that opportunity for them to serve in a public fashion as they've chose their profession to be? And I don't know how many positions, but how, how much could you guarantee that?
Well, the, even under this arrangement, there still will be a group of individuals that will continue to be hired by the convention center itself as a department, who will not only oversee the, the contract of the-
Like contract administrators?
Well, oversee the contract, but also oversee the contract with the LA Bureau, because that function is being transferred from my office to the convention center department, and also provide, ensure that this reconciliation of trade shows and, and citywide conventions happens in real time. So there will be a core group of individuals who will continue to do that work and be responsive to oversight commission.
Let me just say, if I'm a HR AGM over there, Human Relations Assistant General Manager, I think if that's a title, and this position's eliminated because of this new step that we're taking, what opportunity and guarantee would you have, and with Personnel Department of the city of Los Angeles, to even have opportunity either at any of the proprietaries or any other department here?
Well, your, your council directed that all full-time and half-time employees be given employment as a result of this contract. And so that will continue. The, the question that was raised is specific to as-needed employees.
Right.
That obligation does not exist for as-needed employment. There's no guaranteed employment today for as-needed employees.
I understand that.
But for full-time and half-time employees, you're correct, that the city has committed to provide employment either within the convention center, that decision would also be made by the Oversight Commission and the General Manager as to what core staff they're going to keep, and then the, the Personnel Department will work with our office, with the new mayor, and with the various departments throughout the city to ensure that there's employment throughout other departments.
Got it. All right. That's real important to hear. A couple of other questions on this. In the evolution of downtown, from the time of the Union Bank Building, which is the first tall building built in the early 60s, the, the Arco Towers, then to the Bonaventure, which benefited from that. I don't know, Mr. Zen, how long have you had the Bonaventure, your company, but there was benefit giving, and the, and the growth came to when we built the convention center in the 70s. In the mid 70s came the Bonaventure, and then we had nothing but parking lots. And then all of a sudden, there was transformation when Inglewood lost the form and the Lakers came here. And then there was serious discussion, I don't know if you remember Paul, but they were looking at Union Station to have a Madison Square Garden type on top of the tracks there, and there was also the Staples and a couple other sites. The Los Angeles Arena, I believe it was called, and I think it may be good to have this history, and I think Jerry Miller may know it because he did a lot of the negotiation. That all being said, someone wins when there, when there's a, a park next to your property. I, I, all the people in Hollywood Hills win because there's Griffith Park. There's the Hollywood sign. There's Lake Hollywood, all public facilities that people pay for, yet they do have impacts because GPS brings people up into their neighborhoods and all those conflict small streets. Something happens when someone locates and opens the door. There was a tremendous discussion, and it was decided that it, by a group, because the mayor at the time did have a conflict, because he owned property at Ninth and Figueroa, and that was within the zone, and they decided that this is the best place to go. Now we're trying to enhance that. And I remember the parking lot in 2000, which is just 12 years ago, was the Rage, Rage Beyond the Machine, where's the younger deputy? What's the group? Rage Against the Machine?
Against.
Rage Against the Machine. They played that big band right there, right there, and all those challenges. Then all of a sudden, LA Live came, which has transformed, and the Grammy Museum, and all this transformation has taken place, and now this convention center, we have a, a chance to follow. I also do think, and I'm saying this for those people from North Figueroa, we do have one-way streets. It does make a difference to some things, how you feel about the area and, and sense of community. So I just feel comfortable to say from a long-range planning that this is a great opportunity, that, that, that we could put this together as the CAO has recommended. I do want to take what Mr. Memes stated and, and to work on that issue there, because I know there's dedicated public employees, and what Ms. Perizzi said, although I do understand there's some part-time people who work just on conventions, I know we're looking at, or half-time, or what the term is, there was a description you made, I know there's a classification-
As needed.
As needed, which there's a, I, I understand that. But I think there's an opportunity now to take a big step. There's an opportunity now to take a big step to really transform the south end of downtown. And I don't know if the football field will ever come, but I absolutely know that people will come to our city because there's great places to stay, whether it's the new Hyatt transformation up at Third, or at the historic, it's hard to believe it's historic, Peter, but your historic iconic Bonaventure. Everybody wins if we do this. And, and then also, some people are taller, or shorter, or, or faster, or, or whatever the case may be, how it's picked out as a team. I just wanted to express that. But I think there's an opportunity that has transformed downtown, and if AEG, which you recommended, is the one that we're going to count on to be able to transform into the next stages, with or without a football team, we're looking for conventions, which are so important. That is a goal for me. So I just wanted to state that after I got those questions asked, and I'll just give us a little history, because wherever we put the convention center, that's going to be a benefit to whoever's next to it. But nothing has happened. Now things have happened. More could happen, I think, if we go with the city, city administrative officer's statement. Mr. Rosendahl and Mr. Kocorian?
Okay. First of all, I'm going to vote for it, to make it clear that it's the October of 2014, and that the flexibility is part of this process going forward. Second, organized labor, God bless you on this, and we better make sure that absolutely every worker that is part of the operation now is transferred out if, in fact, there's no responsibility for that. I don't want anybody who's on the payroll today on the street tomorrow. We get that guarantee?
For full-time and half-time employees, correct.
Yes. Okay. That's, that's where I was at. Thank you.
I know it doesn't include as-needed. Now, I understand that. You could shake your head, but I'm listening to the CAO, and I know there's also a, a meeting that you could have to discuss that further face-to-face if you need be.
For the as-needed employees, we are going to encourage AEG to utilize the pool of as-needed employees that we currently get utilized for their various activities. And again, it's a, it's a, it's, the, the convention center expands and contracts depending on the event, so-
Yeah.
Certainly during the initial time period that they're running, the convention center are going to need staff that could quickly come, and so during that time, we're, and throughout their contract, we're going to encourage them to continue to use the existing pool of as-needed employees. Our obligation is to full-time and part-time employees to ensure that they have employment throughout the city.
Yeah. The one thing I want to make sure when Ms. Labange was, Tommy was saying about, oh, if you don't get a team, or we get a team, or whatever, downtown is going to vibrate. We better get a team. I've been reading the sports section of the paper, and I intend to be at that game, so let's get that sports team in, as well as the whole concept of taking downtown and bringing them to the new day. Thank you.
Mr. Kocorian?
Thank you. You know, my, I care about two things here. One, that there's a fair process, and that fair process is implemented. And two, that there's competition. That was my concern when, you know, with the first RFP, when there was a non-responsive bid by AEG. I didn't care whether it was AEG or somebody else. The, the point is, I wanted to make sure that we had fair competition among competing bids. After that, it's up, I think, large, I defer to staff to do the appropriate evaluation of, and make the appropriate recommendations to us as to who should prevail in that fair process. That's, that's pretty much the extent of where I think I need to be engaged at this point. But the next point is the negotiation of a contract with the successful bidder. And during that point, I think, as you've heard from now all three of us, there is going to be a lot of concern about ensuring that the current public servants that are serving the people of Los Angeles are treated fairly, that the jobs that currently exist are preserved to the greatest extent that they can be. And I, for one, would prefer something a little stronger than encouraging AEG with regard to as-needed employees. I would like to see that negotiation pressed and see what sorts of contractual provisions can be included in that agreement to ensure that at least those folks get first call.
I want to say that, too.
And, and I'm not going to step into the shoes of the CAO to try to negotiate that here, as, by coincidence, AEG happens to be in the room listening to us, but that is going to be a point that's going to be pretty important to me when the contract comes back for consideration before the Budget and Finance Committee. So other than that, I, I think we evaluated in, in item number one whether this was a fair process. I believe it was. The recommendation is to approve AEG, and I'm going to go with the process.
Thank you. So Madam Clerk, want to call the roll on both committees?
Yes, I do. For the Budget and Finance Committee, Councilman Kocorian?
I, well, if it hasn't been done, I would move the recommendations of the CAO as they're contained in the report.
Second, Mr. Rosendahl.
Okay. And then on the TCT Committee, Councilman Labange?
Yes.
And Councilman Rosendahl.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so that completes the agenda. Is that right, Madam Clerk?
Correct.
I want everybody to have a good day, and this completes the meeting. What, Lisa? It will be at City Council tomorrow. There are rooms available at the Hyatt on, you know, I'm kidding. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. Have a good day.